Just real quickly on ridership, our ridership continues to grow. It's up about 14% from last year. This year we'll carry about 30 million riders on our fleet. And we hit a pretty large milestone this July when we carried 100,000 daily riders. And just to put that in a little bit of perspective, as our population continues to grow and as we continue to bring more service online, we anticipate having about 350,000 daily riders by the year 2030 on just sound transit buses and trains. So we're anticipating this trend to keep moving up. This is a map of light rail in the region. We are literally planning and constructing light rail in all three corridors, north, south, and east. In 2016, we'll open University Link; 2021, Northgate Link; 2023, Linwood up in the north; and then to the east, the East Link Project in 2023; and down south to South 200 in 2016; and further south to Kent Des Moines, which is about the Highland Community College area, in 2023. This is our U-Link segment, which is from downtown Seattle to the University of Washington, two stations, one at Capitol Hill and one at Husky Stadium. We're about 75% complete with construction, and we've actually finished the most riskiest parts of the construction, which is the tunnel mining and the station excavation. And a couple of weeks ago, we shared some really great news with the public. We are currently ahead of schedule, and we're trending about $100 million under budget on the project. And so we've been working with our contractors to see if there's a chance of opening this segment early, and we're waiting to hear back on the feasibility of that. We should be reporting out in the next month or so. So really, really great news if we were to open this segment early. Continuing north, this is our Northgate Link Project. This is a rendering of the Roosevelt Station. We'll be opening in 2021. We are under construction, three stations in this segment, one in the U District, Roosevelt, and of course at Northgate. This is a very high ridership corridor for transit, and we estimate about 62,000 daily riders on just this segment by the year 2030. And I think most of you are familiar with East Link. East Link is 14 miles, 10 stations, and four cities. It's got one station in the city of Seattle, one in Mercer Island, six in Bellevue, and two in Redmond. We have published the final EIS. We have a record of decision from the federal government, and we are currently in final design. So the renderings you see up on the screen are 30% design renderings. We've been out talking to the public about those designs, and we are going to begin construction in 2015 with an opening on the East Link Line in 2023. And then south, so South 200th will open in 2016. This is a rendering of the station there. We have broke ground on this project. And then 2023 will be the Des Moines area. It's on the map there. It's a little bit hard to see. And then all the way down to Federal Way, we are doing the environmental work, and we'll be in a state of shovel readiness if more construction funding were to be identified. And last but not least is our Linwood Link Project. We're currently in the environmental review process for this project. We're gonna draft, or we're gonna, we're just about ready to publish the draft EIS, which means that the Sound Transit Board will select a preferred alternative that we'll study in more detail in the final EIS. This is an eight-and-a-half-mile segment. It's along the I-5 corridor. Again, the north corridor has huge transit ridership, and we expect this segment to be in the 60,000 to 70,000 daily riders by 2035. So all of those projects, those were all approved by voters and funded through the Sound Transit Two measure in 2008. We appreciate the time to give you an update tonight, but we really are here to talk about what's next. And so I want to introduce David Beal, and he will walk you through that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come and speak with you. So having heard about where Sound Transit is on design and construction, now we're talking about what I think is a lot more fun, the planning part of our program. And so, as you know, we are building out the ST2 Plan back last November, almost a year ago. Our board directed the Sound Transit staff to prepare them to be ready to present a new system plan. ST2 was under state law, what's called a regional high-capacity transit system plan. They asked us to be ready for them to present one of those, a new one. Some people have called it ST3, but a new one by the year 2016. So that has made the planning staff very busy for the last year. And I'm here really to talk about the first very formal step in that process of getting a plan ready to take to the voters, and that is another state-required step, and that's called the Long Range Plan. We're required to have one in place. It's required to environmentally clear and consolidate a large set of projects from which the actual projects, which would make it into a new system plan to be presented to the voters, would be drawn. So if you think of ST2, our Long Range Plan adopted in 2005 had over 400 projects cleared. If you look at our Long Range Plan map, you'd see a lot of rail lines, some bus lines, but there were many, many other projects that received environmental clearance through that process, park-and-ride lots, transit centers, bus service itself. And then from that, from those more than 400 projects, we drew 35, about 35, depending on how you count them, made up ST2. So a little less than 10% made it into the system plan. The system plan down the road, which we will develop in 2015 and 2016, that's a financially-constrained plan and a time-constrained plan. We have to identify by what year we would complete it and have a financial plan in place that funds the costs as we estimate them, and then retains funding to operate and maintain whatever systems we've built. So the reason we're doing this, in part, the region is growing, as you know. You deal with these issues every day, I'm sure. But really, just from today till 2035, which might be the timeline on which a new system plan would be completed by, 1.1 million more people will have moved to the region or have been born here. Every day, they'll make work trips, school trips, doctor visits, and they will drive kids all over the place for all kinds of things. So that will increase traffic congestion and delay. Other things will change over that timeframe that we'll study, such as the cost of owning, driving, parking a car. And so how do we respond to that process? So I'm largely here to talk about item two today, but we've already started some work to help inform the Long Range Plan process. At the time the ST2 Plan was adopted by the board, even before it was presented to the voters, the board identified nine high-capacity transit corridors that, when we got to new system planning, we would start the process by studying those. That doesn't mean those are the only corridors or projects that would be considered in a long-range plan or down the road, but it's, some corridors our board, you know, really felt were important and kind of pointed to, and said, "Let's make sure we look at those." As I said, all those other kind of programmatic projects will also be eligible, but we've started work on those corridor studies. We started some of them as much as a year ago, and the rest we've begun this summer. And those will be completed by June of next year. Very soon, we, I mean, we have actually started work on the Long Range Plan, but in just four days, on the 25th of October, the environmental process, the formal environmental process will begin. From October 25th to November 25th will be the scoping period for a state environmental impact statement, which will be developed for the long, the new Long Range Plan. So, and as you know, scoping is the point where you tell us how we should study things and what things we should study. I understand you were already, at least staff and some of you are already talking about some of those things you'd like to ask us to make sure we look at. And then when that process will conclude next year, right at the end of the year, and then in January of 2015, we will turn to developing the new system plan, which would be the one we present to the voters. So leading into the Long Range Plan are these high-capacity transit corridor studies that we're doing. Five of these nine corridors are centered on what we've packaged together, and we call them the East and Central Studies, because they all touch at some point, and they all affect, and they all, in some way or another, would connect with East Link when it's completed. So we're looking at the East Side Rail Corridor, which used to be the, used to be called the Woodinville subdivision owned by the BNSF that runs north-south through the east side. We're looking at a line from Redmond to Kirkland to the University District, district, and at least roughly the 520 corridor. We're looking at a bus rapid transit system on, in the I-405 corridor. That's something that Washtot or State DOT-led process 10 or 12 years ago concluded that that corridor would best someday be served not by rail but by a bus system. And that was a regional consensus, about 30 jurisdictions participated in that. So we are taking that as a starting point. We're looking at a line from Kirkland to Bellevue to Issaquah. And then we're looking at a line that would come from Ballard in Seattle over to the University District and connect, or maybe just directly connect and interline with the second line I mentioned, which is Redmond to Kirkland to the U District. So there could be a one-seat ride all the way from Redmond through Kirkland, across the bridge to the University District onto Ballard, and then that, actually, there's another study not listed here, from Ballard to downtown Seattle. So that's a long route to get to downtown Seattle, but it could provide a one-seat ride with lots of intervening opportunities along the way for people from the east side to get to places in Seattle. And we're, excuse me. So these studies are all running about 10 months each, so they're relatively high level. We're not going into great detail. Instead, they are very broad studies. And so we're looking, the front end of each of the studies, we're generating a large number of alternatives for how to serve that corridor, and then we will screen them down to a few, or several. And we'll do that by looking at potential routes or alignments and station areas and different station areas in combination with each other. And profile, that means whether the line is in the air or on the ground, or at least in short sections in a tunnel. And we'll be looking at the modes that would operate on those lines, whether light rail, commuter rail, whether BRT options are more appropriate. Well, we'll be estimating operating costs. We'll also be looking at future transit-oriented development opportunities at those station sites and how that might affect ridership or the value of the line. We'll be looking at ridership and environmental impacts. The other line, I've mentioned most of the other lines, but there's a couple at the north of the map you see there. The green line would look at extending the Linwood Line, which will be completed by 2023, extending that all the way to Everett. And our south line past the airport, which would, we're looking at extending it from Federal Way to Tacoma, which, as you can see, if everything was built, that's a pretty rich, high-capacity transit system. And please feel free to interrupt me if you have questions as we go. This map is our existing Long Range Plan map. As I said, there are many things you're not seeing on the map. Most of those 400 projects that make up our Long Range Plan that's currently in place are not on the map. What's on the map are really only the high-capacity transit corridors themselves. So all of these lines are candidates to remain in the new Long Range Plan, or potentially to be deleted, or to change in their status from bus to rail or from a bus route to a So that's, so that's our starting point, as well as everything we hear from the public and from our jurisdictional partners during the scoping process of the things which are candidates for the new Long Range Plan. So unlike the system plan, which has to be constrained by time and by funding, our Long Range Plan is unconstrained. You may look at it someday and think it's a 50-year plan. Someone else may look at it and think it's an 80-year plan. That's okay under state law. In fact, that's probably a good thing. And, and there won't be a formal price tag on it. We will probably cost out the system in total, but it won't be a major component of the plan, because in fact, it's, the Long Range Plan is not a funded program. So during scoping, we want to hear from you, and I'm going to talk about how we can do that. So the scoping process on the far left starts Friday, and it will run for 30 days. It's where you get to tell us what you'd like to see eventually, or at least studied or like to see in the eventual Long Range Plan. In December, we will come back to our Board of Directors and tell them what we've heard and what alternatives we believe we're studying. We don't expect to screen a lot out, but we will conduct some kind of high-level analysis of whether projects are consistent with our goals and objectives and the mission of Sound Transit. But other than that, we don't expect probably to screen a lot of projects out. From after, once we do that, from January to June, we will go slightly dark, because we're going to be very busy preparing the draft supplemental environmental impact statement. And we'll need some time to do that. By July, we will publish the draft environmental impact statement, again, for public comment. And then we'll address those and wrap up a final supplemental EIS on the Long Range Plan in autumn of next year, so that by December, if they choose to, our Board of Directors will be ready to adopt a new Long Range Plan. It's important to the schedule that somewhere around that timeframe, we have a new Long Range Plan, so we know what the body of projects are that we can draw from for the next system plan. And we know from having done it a couple of times, that's about a year and a half process for our board. A year and a half gives them enough cycles of looking at alternatives and evaluating them and screening some things out and winnowing 400 projects down to 30, and looking at them in different combinations, as well as having time for them to consider what they're doing and to allow the public to look at that process and comment again. So that takes about a year and a half, and that's our deadline. July of 2016, our board would have to adopt a new system plan if they were to present it to the voters in November of 2016. So we will have, besides the scoping process, just being open to anyone who wants to comment, and we'll have websites people can go to, we'll have forms they can fill out with their comments, or they can send us letters. But there's a number of other formal opportunities. On November 8th, we will have, we always conduct a public meeting, which is really aimed at jurisdictions and other public agencies. We conduct it during business hours, and that tends to be kind of a more technical conversation for a couple of hours with staff from around the region. Then in the evenings, we're going to conduct six, I'm sorry, five public meetings on the Long Range Plan during November, starting the 12th and ending the 19th. The one that's most pertinent to you is the one on the east side, which will be at Redmond, at the Redmond Marriott on the 14th of November. And then there will be one more chance at the end, on November 21st, in Sound Transit's headquarters, a Union Station in Seattle during the day for other people who haven't had a chance to go to a night meeting, to come if they can and give us comments. And then the comment period will conclude at the end of November. And with that, I will give you back your meeting, but I would be very happy to answer any questions you have.
So David, it looked like you did a pretty good job. You're not generating many questions, but just a couple of points that perhaps I want to make sure that I've got right. The scoping period is an opportunity for anyone who has any ideas, whether they make, well, I won't say whether they make much sense or not, but it is an opportunity to think big and to identify corridors, specific projects, and things like that that could be considered, would be considered, without any concern for what they cost. It's an unconstrained look at the future, and then that will be winnowed down a bit and linked up with our, our financial capabilities that we think, funds that would be available, you know, to carry forward. Is that, that about right?
That's right. The only thing I would add is, besides thinking big, we also invite commenters to think very specifically. For example, if you like, for example, a rail line that runs from Issaquah to Bellevue to Kirkland, you could tell us that. But if you had thoughts about, very specific thoughts about where stations should be located, how those stations might be served by parking or bike paths or other kinds of access improvements, tell us that as well.
Right.
We would love to hear that.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda this evening is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on topics that are, that may be on the agenda but may not and that are not the subject of a public hearing for this particular evening. There is one item that is the topic of a public hearing, and that is Agenda Bill 6708, a major amendment to the Issaquah Highlands Two-Party Development Agreement and New Development Agreement for Highlands Blocks 29 through 42. This will be the initial public hearing, and the public hearing will be continued to November 18th. So if there is another topic, other than the one for that public hearing, that is of interest or concern to anyone who is present this evening, this is the opportunity to speak to it. The guidelines for participation are, we ask that when you are recognized, that you use the lectern and the microphone, so that you may be seen and heard by those who are in council chambers this evening, and also those who may be viewing the council meeting on Government Access Channel 21. We ask that you state your name, your address, and if you wish to emphasize a relationship to the city, such as you are a resident, a property owner, a business owner, whatever it is that you feel is particularly important for us to know about you, that would be the time to let us know. We further ask that you limit your comments to five minutes or fewer, and those comments are timed. Our clerk will be timing them, and you will receive a notice or a warning as it gets closer to your, to your time running out. If you have written comments, we ask that you please submit them to the city clerk. And with that, I will ask if anyone has signed up to speak during audience comments.
I have two. Steve Markey. If you could speak from the podium.
My name is Steve. I go by Markey or Marquis. I'm from Falls City. I do all of my shopping here in this town, and I worked here for about 18 years until my firm moved to Bothell. So I do have a little bit of a commute and a deep interest in the transit situation as well. This last, two weeks ago, I was part of a community effort to gather a lot of food for the local food banks, and we gathered about 4,000 pounds worth that afternoon. It was just pounding rain that day, and as the food came in, a lot of it was coming from Issaquah. And all the food that was coming in from Issaquah was coming in paper bags, for the most part, and it was all falling apart in our hands. And we eventually had to go to the local store, buy garbage bags to put all the generously donated food into plastic bags, which is appropriate here in the Northwest. Well, it was kind of a metaphor. Several of us had been out gathering signatures for the last several months. It's a very, very difficult task to gather that many signatures. In the times that I spent, it takes about 10 minutes per signature, and it doesn't matter whether you're standing in front of a store or going knocking door to door. It's just hard to take that much time out of your day to do that. But it was accomplished, because so many of the citizens of this town felt very strongly that either their rights were infringed or their practicality was trampled upon by probably well-meaning, I think it's a well-meaning ordinance. I mean, in my view, I'm a conservationist. I've been a scoutmaster for years. I'm very much into the environment, but I'm also an engineer, thinking about how do you solve problems? And it occurred to me, as we were trying to repeal this particular ordinance, that there's a real need. I get it. I don't like to see garbage. I've picked up a great deal of garbage over the years as part of my work with the Boy Scouts, lots of truckloads worth of it. So I get it, and I want to see that going away. And so I came up with a proposal. I believe the members of the council and the mayor received copies of this, which was a simple proposal. Maybe you've already taken it up. I wasn't here when you deliberated the first time. But the idea is simply that plastic bags can be done in several varieties, and they can be done in biodegradable styles or compostable styles. There is no perfect solution, other than perfect responsibility from the people. And since that is lacking, I understand that there may be an effort to try to find an engineered solution. Well, one of those engineered solutions is simply compostable plastic bags. There's a number of cities on this west coast who are already kind of thinking along those lines. Some of them are codified in law, and some of that law I tried to reduce down into a form that maybe our council could consider. And it basically, in plain English, it simply says that consumer shopping bags provided by merchants are permitted, provided they are properly labeled and made from materials certified or generally known to be biodegradable or compostable. They may be used, given away, or sold to consumers at the discretion of the merchant. Labels and industry standard color schemes clearly indicate to the consumer the best practice for disposal. Compostable bags would be recycled via existing yard waste programs where available and collection spots at retail outlets. Positive incentives could be suggested or used by retailers to encourage full participation as a good citizen of the community here. So I think it's a reasoned approach. Even within my own group, I work with a Tea Party group in this area, and I'm kind of doing a poll of that group there, and probably about a third of them, they don't want to see any laws at all. I mean, they are so sick and tired of laws telling them what to do, they don't want to see any laws. And the other part, we're saying, okay, that's a, that's a good compromise, you know?
Forty-five seconds?
Forty-five seconds. Okay. Well, anyway, so, so even in the group that I represent, there is a division of opinion on the matter. The, the words that I put together were my own. I offer them for your, for your review and consideration. I think you'd get widespread support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is
Dave Augustin.
Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Dave Augustin. I'm a citizen of Sammamish, but I'm also one of your firefighters. You want me to repeat my address? 723 212th Avenue Southeast in Sammamish. Our president, our union president, John Wiseman, could not attend tonight, so I'm here to comment on his behalf. It's in regards to the resolution that you're going to be looking at tonight, in regards to the funding model resolution for, as it relates to Eastside Fire. First off, we all want to thank you for your willingness to think regionally and beyond the boundaries of just your city. I know I speak on behalf of all the members when I say that we feel fortunate to have Issaquah as part of the partnership. We also want to thank you for your statesmanship in taking steps to work with the city of Sammamish and all the EFOR partners, to find a resolution to the current conflict over the funding model. Your firefighters are extremely concerned about Sammamish's plan to leave Eastside Fire, and the effects that it will have on all of us. What we can tell you is that the proposal that we've seen is inconclusive and leaves a lot more questions unanswered than I, as a Sammamish taxpayer, want to see. But what we can tell you is, so far, of their bare bones department, it's going to be a less quality service and quite possibly more costly for the taxpayers. A regional partnership is much more cost-effective and community-based than their own reports has even shown. There is a lot at stake for the citizens of Sammamish and for the partners of all of Eastside Fire, as well as your firefighters, if Sammamish leaves the consortium. We understand it isn't easy to compromise or take the high road, so please, please know that we appreciate your efforts here tonight in moving forward, as you try to work with Sammamish to find a resolution to keep the partnership together. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other people signed up to speak? Is there anyone present who hasn't had an opportunity to speak who wishes to speak? Yes, sir.
Good evening, council. My name is Craig Keller with an address, mailing address of P.O. Box 321 Issaquah, and I'm a resident of Seattle. And I'm very happy to be here tonight, and thank you for your consideration of the petition that many of us volunteers assembled for your consideration. I appreciated all the hard work that your staff does every week. It's very apparent in the agenda available online. Was able to review that last night, and did notice a resolution dealing with the dispensation of the petition. The resolution that was composed was composed for the purposes of referring to the ballot next February, this question, to the voters. One thing I didn't notice, though, there's an absence of a resolution relative to the council's ability to directly adopt the ordinance and save a precious $50,000-some dollars on a special election. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to consider that before, since that agenda was posted. I've corresponded with each one of you about that, and it's just, it's one of the two options, and I hope you would consider it, and maybe even someone introduce that tonight. That's a lot of money. I happen to believe, although I don't know the details, and I'm in the midst of researching this, how this ordinance has, through the exodus of shoppers in Issaquah, harmed the environment here, harmed the business environment and your tax collections. I'll do the research on this. I'm sure your staff can work on that as well, and maybe I'm wrong, what have you, but I'm going to look into that. But, you know, to put the $50,000 cost of a special election on top of that loss, I don't think that's in the best interest of the citizens. And, you know, additionally, although I'm a real advocate for the citizens' voice through the initiative process, it's just an opportunity, although all of you strive very daily and hard to represent your constituents well, I think there's always the opportunity for citizens to stand up and maybe give a slightly different opinion, and we need to protect that process. It's probably more important to me than even the plastic bags on this particular issue, particularly since the sponsor of your municipal ordinance is an Olympian now, trying to harm the ability of citizens to express their voice on this particular matter of shopping bags through state legislation, and I don't think that should be allowed to stand, whether you're a proponent of bag regulation, or you're a proponent of more freedom. So Initiative 517 addresses that, and it requires that governmental bodies put something to the ballot, even if there's some objection. So I support that. So that's what I want to say. I support the initiative process. But it's a lot of money that's being proposed to put this to the ballot. The other issue that you're confronting, or you're working on a resolution of, is this incorporation of Kohani. Now they don't have a bag resolution. There are so many Issaquah residents that now shop up at the hill, and I think it would just be quite a generous sign for you, you council, tonight, to vote for immediate adoption of this ordinance, and just get back to where we were before. All of you have lived in Issaquah for longer than we've had this bag ordinance, and let's get back to that. And let's, you might want to pass that as a sign of a welcome to these people, that will be considering in a few short months whether they would like to join you here in Issaquah. So I'm grateful for that, your consideration. I encourage you to consider direct adoption of this, and I just want to thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here this evening? Yes, sir.
My name's Jeff Drozdowski. Would you like me to spell that? No? It's D-R-O-Z-D-O-W-S-K-I. I am a resident of Issaquah, 780 Front Street South, number 310. And I am a business owner in the city of Issaquah. We're based over on Maple Street. And I also spend several hours per month volunteering in the city. So, first of all, mayor, council members, thank you very much. I love this city. It's a great place to live. It's a pretty good place to own a business. So you're doing a lot of things right? Thank you. Great job. That being said, the bag ban, oh my gosh, I hate it with the passion of a thousand suns. If I have one more bag rip apart on me in a parking lot, and my groceries go flying everywhere, my head's going to explode. Your heart's in the right place. I get it. I think that that type of thing, trying to save the environment, should be left up to the people. I have several reusable bags. Often I forget to bring it in, so they just sit in my house, and I'm forced to use the paper bag, which they charge you for, and I wouldn't even mind that, but they just fall apart, and I hate them. To take a quote from my father, "I'm not mad, just a little disappointed." Some anecdotal evidence for you. I've yet to talk to one person, I'm a pretty vocal guy. I've yet to talk to one person who likes the bag ban, except one person, and then after about a five-minute conversation with her, she changed her mind, so even she doesn't like it now. Also, I have gone to Costco and picked up like a thousand trash bags that I never had to purchase before, because I would reuse my plastic bags that I got from the store, and I would use them as a trash bag. So now I just had to buy trash bags. So instead of having something that I could use for two things, carrying my groceries and carrying my trash, now I had to buy a bunch of bags that were going into a landfill that only do one thing. So I don't think it's really getting what you want, anyway. That's all I want to say. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Please, please, take away the bag ban. We hate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present this evening who wishes to speak during audience comments? Anyone else who wishes to speak during audience comments? Third call. Anyone else who wishes to speak during audience comments? Okay, hearing and seeing no one else who wishes to speak during audience comments, audience comments are closed. And with that, we will move to committee and regional reports, and we will start with Councilmember Forkner.
Thank you. The Council Infrastructure Committee met on Thursday, October 10th, in the Pickering Room. We discussed the 2014 solid waste rates, and also Agenda Bill 6562, the water system plan update. The next meeting is planned for Thursday, November 14th, at 5:30 in the Pickering Room. Currently on the agenda is Agenda Bill 6734, King County Metro Service Reductions. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Land and Shore Committee met on October 8th, and I was not at that meeting. I have the notes, so I will rely on council members Butler and Forkner to correct me if I'm wrong. There was one item on the agenda, it was the Swedish Development Agreement, and I believe the most of the discussion that occurred that night was about procedure and the public hearing that will be held tonight, and perhaps continued. And that was the only item on the agenda. I understand it was a fairly short meeting. How did that happen? That I was, there are two, three-hour meetings, and then I leave, and you all get this lovely short meeting. So the next Land and Shore meeting is Tuesday, November 12th, at 5:00 p.m., here in city council, sorry, here in council chambers, and the agenda has not been set, but the Swedish Development Agreement will likely be on that agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scher?
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Barber?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next Services and Safety Committee meeting will be on November 7th, at 5:00 p.m. in the Eagle Room. The agenda has not been set, so just stay tuned to the city website.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein?
No report.
Councilmember Butler?
Briefly, the second session of our budget deliberations will be held this Thursday, October 24th, beginning at 6 o'clock here in council chambers, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. The mayor's report, first item, there will not be an executive session meeting this evening. The next one, in a unanimous decision, October 10th, the Boundary Review Board for King County supported Issaquah's plan to ask Kohani potential annexation area voters if they would like to annex to Issaquah. It is expected that the board's preliminary decision will be confirmed during its next meeting, November 6th. Before the board voted, member Claudia Hershey said it would be irresponsible for Issaquah to not honor the potential annexation area residents' efforts. We are hopeful that the Boundary Review Board's decision will not be appealed. It was clear from the Boundary Review Board deliberations that the annexation is both legal and consistent with the Growth Management Act. An appeal would simply delay or potentially derail the potential annexation area voters from making a decision on their future. More information on the Kohani potential annexation area is available at the city's website, issaquahwa.gov/kohani. Next, this is a reminder to not, don't forget to vote in this November's general election. Ballots are due Tuesday, November 5th, and you may drop ballots off in the ballot dropbox located in front of City Hall. Of course, you may also mail them. On the ballot, there will be a number of important items, including the park bond measure, which is intended to be used to protect open space and wildlife habitat, improve neighborhood parks, and make repairs to the Julius Bohm Pool. And again, you may go to the city's website, the end of that one is /parkbond. On Friday, this coming Friday, October 25th, bring your children ages six or younger to the Issaquah Community Center from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. for our Fall Fun Fest. Wear your costumes and enjoy activity booths planned and hosted by the Issaquah Youth Center Youth. There will be toddler, oh, toddler time toys will be out, too. $2 donation per child is requested. The city of Issaquah and the Public Health Department of Seattle, King County, have teamed up for an in-person enrollment event from noon to 6:00 p.m. on Monday, October 28th this year, in the Eagle Room at Issaquah City Hall across the street, 130 East Sunset Way, for residents who don't have health insurance and would like to enroll in affordable health options through Washington Health Plan Finder. And that concludes my report. Next on the agenda this evening is the consent calendar, and the very first thing I will ask the council is, have the accounts been reviewed? They have.
They have.
All right. Then I will ask the council's pleasure on the consent calendar. Councilmember Butler?
I would move approval of the consent calendar as published. Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Consent calendar is adopted. The next item on the council's agenda this evening is a public hearing, Agenda Bill 6708, previously described as a major amendment to Issaquah Highlands Two-Party Development Agreement and new development agreement for Highlands Blocks 29 through 42. And as noted, this is the initial public hearing. The public hearing will be continued to November 18th. And I see that we have our economic development director here to present information prior to the opening of the public hearing.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members. So Agenda Bill 6807, as mentioned, is a major amendment to the Issaquah Highlands Two-Party Development Agreement and a new development agreement for Swedish health services. So the property that we're talking about is outlined in yellow on the map. To give you a little context, this is the existing hospital, right here. This is Pro Alliance, right here, and Discovery Drive is at the north side, and this is Highlands Drive that kind of swoops around to the east. So what we're talking about really is this piece of property being added into the Swedish campus, but the development agreement, my mouse go, there it is, I'm sorry, but what we're talking about for the development agreement is basically encompassing the entire property, so the existing property as well as the addition, which works out to be about 28 acres. So the details, what we're talking about is removing the property from the Issaquah Highlands. And so that's the major modification of the development agreement, is to take that 28 acres and take it out of Issaquah Highlands, and then to replace it with a new development agreement. The reason we're doing that primarily from a process standpoint is, as long as it's in the Issaquah Highlands, there's a couple of things that come into play. One is that Port Blakely remains the master developer, and having them be kind of in the middle of any discussions with this property owner, because Swedish plans to be the property owner for a very long time here. And so having Port Blakely in the middle of that just doesn't seem to make sense. And the other piece is, the Issaquah Highlands Development Agreement is set to reach the end of its term in about three, three and a half years. And so it's clear that the amount of development that Swedish expects to have on the property will not have taken place by then. So there were a couple of factors which sent us down the path of doing a new development agreement. So the highlights are, it's a 20-year agreement, we're talking about approximately 28 acres of land. In total, including the hospital, there's going to be over a million square feet of space for Swedish. This is existing entitlement from Issaquah Highlands. So this isn't new development. This is basically taking what could go there anyway, and just putting a new regulatory tool on top of the property that would be managed by Swedish and the city. Through our conversations, Swedish has made a commitment for contributing to transit in some way. We've talked about a mandatory community space, so a gathering space, and there is a commitment for them to continue the sustainability that they showed, and the green building innovations that they had with the existing hospital on, with the new development. It won't be exactly the same as the hospital, but to be innovative in terms of their development style. So that's basically the, kind of the highlights of the proposed development agreement. We've been, as Councilmember Goodman mentioned, we've been through land and shore, we plan to go back through land and shore, we've been through the infrastructure committee twice, and the UVDC has been reviewing the development agreement, and we're expecting at their November 5th meeting to get a recommendation from them on the draft development agreement.
Any questions from council before the public hearing is opened? All right. With that, it is 11 minutes before 8:00, and the public hearing is opened. The procedure for the public hearing- The procedure for the public hearing is very much like that for audience comments. We ask that, when you are recognized, you use the lectern and microphone to be seen and heard by those in Council Chambers and those during the council meeting on television. We ask that you state your name, your address. If you wish to indicate a relationship to the city at that time, please feel free to do so. Comments are limited to five minutes or fewer, and if you have written remarks or comments, please submit them for the city clerk. And with that, I will ask if anyone is speak... Is signed up to speak during the public hearing.
Yes, I have one. Michael Robinson?
Good evening, Mayor Friesinger, members of the City Council. My name is Mike Robinson. I'm here on behalf of Swedish. Also here tonight are Chuck Salmon and Alexander Gross of Swedish. Our testimony is brief. First of all, I'd be remiss if I didn't say this in public. We really appreciate the work that your staff has put into this. We're very pleased with the development agreement as it's worked out. We think the comments we've received from the different committees, from the UVDC and from staff have been quite helpful. We've got a development agreement we think will serve us and the community quite well for the next 20 years. So, we ask that you continue it to November 18th, and we hope that night that you approve it. Thank you for your time tonight.
Anyone else who wishes to speak during the public hearing? I'll give three calls on that. Anyone else who wishes to speak during the public hearing? Third opportunity, anyone else who wishes to speak during the public hearing? There is a recommendation coming back to the council from Land and Shore Committee, and so I will ask councilmember Goodman to speak to that.
I would move to continue the public hearing to the November 18th, 2013 council meeting.
Second?
Moved by Goodman and seconded by Butler. Any discussion or questions from the council? Hearing and seeing no questions from the council, I will ask if you are ready to act upon this motion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passed unanimously, and the public hearing is continued. Next to come before the council under regular business is Agenda Bill 6684, Financial Policies. And those policies have been available to the council online, and they have been presented to the council in hard copy this evening. And this is coming back with a recommendation for the administration, and so I will ask the council how you wish to proceed. I see that it has had a recommendation from the Services and Safety Committee. Councilmember Barber?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, this was brought back or held in committee for a second time on October 3rd. We did review and discuss the revisions of the financial policy that were requested during the September 5th committee meeting, and after agreeing on the final polishing of the policies, the committee recommended placing this resolution for adoption to the comprehensive financial and budget policies on this date, October 21st, 2013. Our financial department director is here, Diane Marcot, if we have questions for her. But if I could start by making a motion, move to resolve resolution, make it... To approve resolution number?
2013-13.
Establishing and adopting a comprehensive financial and budget policies.
Second?
Okay. Moved by Barber and seconded by Winterstein. So, the topic is now open for discussion and questions. How would the council like to proceed? Councilmember Winterstein?
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to do... We're in budget deliberations for 2014 right now, and that... The published document we have includes a copy of the, well, still current financial policies, and I'm hoping, or maybe expecting, that should we adopt these policies tonight, that the 2014... Well, I guess it's a question, will the 2014 preliminary budget document be updated and have these new policies included?
Say so.
Diane Marcot. We certainly can do an amendment to the preliminary budget and provide it online, the changes if the resolution is so adopted tonight.
Okay. And so, I have a multi-part comment, so I appreciate it. Thank you. And so, okay, so then that tells me then that, and as I expected, that... Or hope that the proposed budget, you know, was put together with many of these in mind, because we'd been discussing them, and hopefully there weren't any surprises there. Were you going to say something, Diane?
I was just going to say that the general philosophy that the council has been discussing over the last three months were taken into consideration when developing the preliminary budget.
Okay. Thank you very much. And so, one of the items that I... We talked about related to these policies, we... At the last committee, the whole work session, had to do with our reserve and fund policies. It's in Section 3 of the proposed policies. And in there, it, in the opening sentence, it says, "The purpose of the reserve and fund policies is to establish general parameters for the cash balances of the various funds to ensure sufficient resources to handle most large unexpected expenditures without the need for debt, to mitigate revenue shortfalls stemming from a downturn in the local economy, and third, to maintain a favorable credit rating." So, further, further, let me read from there. What this... What these policies... What this proposed policy says regarding the general fund reserve policy, "The general fund will have a minimum reserve of 8% of budgeted expenses to maintain operations. Recommended best practices is to maintain a maximum of 15% reserve, which will be the target reserve, but no use of ending fund balance below 8% will be authorized without the vote of the majority plus one or supermajority of the city council." So, I read that one in particular because it occurred to me that in our current budget deliberations, that I think that the proposed budget has a... Has a ratio much higher than the target of 15. And one thing, I don't think we've done as a council is give any guidance to the administration on how to view a balance, ending fund balance of the general fund above that target that's in these proposed. And so, you know, I thought that for just... I wanted to go on the record of speaking, what I thought are my own personal beliefs on what... Or guidance, I would call it. Guidance I would give, and let my fellow councilmembers know, that I'll be considering as we continue with this 2014 budget policy that... And I'm going to call this... These funds at the current plan of... Or the current... Or above the target. So, we're roughly... I think we're going to... Looks like we're going to finish 2013 at a roughly 21% ratio. These policies propose our target of 15%. And just for everyone's benefit, if I'm going to consider uses for those funds, I'm going to look for three different things. And first of all, I would... I would look to see some of those funds perhaps placed in a contingency fund. Second, I would look to see how these funds could be leveraged... Could be leveraged to help acquire capital assets for the long-term benefit of our citizens. Let me say that again. These funds above the target used as leverage to help acquire capital assets for the long-term benefit of our citizens, perhaps just, you know, perhaps a transportation project. And then, thirdly, and this one, I think, is a little bit more difficult, but I could see... I would look for the use of these funds. I would be open to use for operational expenditures that appear to become sustainable per the So, one of the great things that's developed over the last few years is that we have put together a financial... A five-year financial forecast. It is a very useful tool. You can philosophically, if we just went year to... Only looked year to year, I don't think we would be doing our proper duty. And I think, looking long-term at... And I know the city has a track record of conservatively forecasting revenues and expenditures, which is a good philosophy, and that... But if... But sometimes, I do believe that funds can be used to support operational expenditures. If we look at that line and see in the long-term forecast that this line will become sustainable, and that inflows, revenues inflows, will cover the outflows, the expected expenses, then I would definitely... I would definitely consider the use of those funds for those purposes. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, discussion?
Councilmember Butler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the general philosophy around these revised financial policies is that revenues will cover expenditures. And in the past, we have used ending fund balance and other funds to sort of balance the budget. And commenting on councilmember Winterstein's comments, the three uses, I'm not sure whether your third use of ending fund balance, when you say use for operational expenditures to become more sustainable, whether that third goal of yours moves us in that direction.
That's a question?
That is a question.
That's a question, and so, councilmember Winterstein?
All right. Thank you. So, I think... Well, I've heard the council say, last year's budget deliberations, and in the meeting we had already, that we would look to... Matter of fact, I sat at one of those tables right down there within the last couple of weeks and said, hey, we've got outflows that exceed inflows. And so, to... And this is proper. To balance the budget, we were using some of our ending fund balance. So, some of our cash at hand that we started with, we're getting so much inflowing in, we expect, we're proposing, so much flowing out in expenditures, and that ending fund balance would be less because our outflows would exceed our inflows. And this council has expressed, boy, you know, maybe not. Maybe we shouldn't be planning on expenditures that exceed incoming revenues. And if you look at one year only, I... As I... It would be... I would be hard-pressed, because I think, councilmember Butler, you used the word at our last work session meeting. You said, "Is that sustainable?" And that actually, your comment of yours is what inspired my thought about this as well, because we saw tonight, we know that there's development happening, that... And that there may be more, and the economy may change in good ways or in bad, and we have a forecasting tool that we use for this long-term planning. And so, that if we can sustain operations and achieve our objectives and be true to our policies in a budget where the outflows exceed the inflows for a given year, but when we then take those expenditures that would roll... Those operational expenditures, perhaps it's positions, just to throw an example, additional staff. That's just one example. There could be some other program whose costs run multi-years. If we see that in our five-year forecast, that revenues can catch up and would cover that, in other words, then the program becomes sustainable in our forecast, then I would consider such an element to the budget. Does that make sense?
It does, and that is helpful, because I think it's very important to take a longer-term view and move towards a sustainable financial system that... So that when we get down to that 15%, we don't have to dip below it, and we can sort of live within our means. So, I just wanted to clarify that, and I agree with that third goal of yours, and I haven't really thought about the other two yet, but we'll have an opportunity to talk about this as we continue to deliberate on the budget. So, I'm glad that these new financial policies will be incorporated into the proposed 2014 budget and provide us guidance as we go through deliberations.
Other discussion or questions, and I'll look to other councilmembers. Does anyone else want to comment before councilmember Winterstein speaks again? Councilmember Goodman?
Well, it's short, but I generally agree with councilman Winterstein's discussion on looking for the reasons behind why we might be spending a little bit down in the short term.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. And just for everybody's benefit, as maybe a reminder for some, one of the things we learned was that as outside entities, you know, assess our city and our financial performance, there's some pretty good material, and there's pretty good information out in the marketplace that municipalities that generally can maintain a balance at around the 15% ratio is considered doing a very good job, and tend to be well-positioned for the occasions that I mentioned earlier. It could be unforeseen expenses or a downturn in the economy. And so, and that... So, we've done... We're above that. So, we're adopting policies tonight. We're considering a policy tonight that formally says 15. And so, that's a planning tool. And, you know, we, the council, need to work together, you know, with the administration, and not only looking at the next year and beyond on how to best use the resources. And sometimes, an investment, you know, takes a few years to pay off, and I would... And there will be occasions when that's, you know, it'll be two or three more years before certain investments pay off. And we need to... That... There will be occasions where that is the best use of the citizens' resources, and we need to be able to consider those.
Thank you. Other questions or discussion from the council? Any further questions or discussion? Are you ready, then, to act upon the approval of Resolution Number 22013-13, Establishing and Adopting Comprehensive Financial and Budget Policies? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passed unanimously. And before we proceed further, I need to note that councilmember Martz is excused from attendance since... Didn't do that earlier. The next item to come before the council this evening under regular business is Agenda Bill 6688, an ordinance establishing pre-annexation zoning for the Kohani potential annexation area. And the liaison on this has been our Land and Shore Committee. The motion is coming back from the administration per the council's direction at the last council meeting, which was to bring back the proposed ordinance with no changes for council action. But we need someone to move that ordinance, so...
I would move to adopt ordinance number?
2695.
Establishing pre-annexation zoning for the Kohani potential annexation area in conformance with RCW 35A 14140 and IMC 1806060, annexation classification.
Second?
Moved by Goodman, seconded by Winterstein. And now, this is open for discussion. Discussion or questions? Councilmember Winterstein?
Yeah. When the last... The second public meeting, I made some... We got some information from staff, which I found was very helpful. Thank you, Trish. There were... Because the... members of the public had come forward and asked that current parts of the zoning in, in the PAA, which has the county R6, which allows up to six units per acre, that our proposed zoning is to label it, single-family lots, which allows up to 7.26 units per acre. And the analysis that was provided is that, within the PAA area, there are four, 2,447 parcels, holding 2,500 units, which basically says there is nearly one unit per parcel. And, and which, which, my assessment of that is, is that there's, there's, there's parcels, and there's individual homes on them. And there was a concern that, that our proposed zoning, should the annexation go through, we're proposing here, to go from six per acre to 7.26 would be an increase of 20% density. But I think those numbers show that that is, I've convinced myself that that's, that's very unlikely, that there would be that increase in density, because a single owner would have to actually acquire up to two full acre, adjacent acres, which could be up to, currently, up to eight parcels currently, two acres, just before they could create, put one more dwelling unit on those two acres than they could above today's zoning. And I don't think that's very likely, I mean, I've given that some thought. So, I appreciate it being raised to us, and, even that's the purpose of the public process. So, I'm, and, so I, the proposed zoning of aligning the current R6 with our single-family, single lots, or, or 7.26 dwelling units per acre is, I think, is, is satisfactory. So, I just wanted to share that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Butler?
Just briefly, I noticed we had a number of people that came to the first public hearing and spoke. I'd just point out, at the second public hearing, no one came and spoke for or against this.
Any other questions or comments? Is the council ready, then, to act on the adoption of ordinance number 2695, establishing pre-annexation zoning, as just described? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that's five in favor, and one in opposition. Councilmember Scher. The next item to come before the council this evening is Agenda Bill 6721, the 2014 State Legislative Agenda. And this is coming back from the administration. And Deputy Administrator Charlie Bush is here to discuss this or present on it.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. Very briefly, I've included two copies of the legislative agenda that you discussed at the 24th of September Committee of the Whole Meeting. One is marked up, one is clean, they're identical. I just wanted to make sure that the changes that you had requested were very clearly made in the marked-up version. There was also a little bit of new information that came along during the time between the meetings, and so, you'll see a few additional changes included in here. I'm happy to walk through those if you'd like, but in the interest of time, I figured I'd open it for questions and go from there.
Does the council wish to pose a motion, and then begin with questioning and discussion? Councilmember Butler?
I would move to approve the 2014 State Legislative Agenda.
Second. Moved by Butler, seconded by Barber. And now, are there questions that the council has about the agenda? Or observations, comments? Councilmember Butler?
Just a general observation, I'm delighted that we are considering our legislative agenda this evening, before the end of October. This provides guidance to our lobbyists, and will enable us to focus our energies on those things that are important to the city of Issaquah and our citizens, as we move into the next legislative session after the first of the year. Much of the work in preparing for that by the staff in Olympia is done between now and the end of the year, and so, I believe that, again, this will be helpful as we present our desires and needs in Olympia this coming year.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Barber?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too, wanted to be appreciative of this particular Agenda Bill coming forward. I know last year was one of the first times that we had strongly used a lobbyist, and I think we were very beneficial in the outcome of that particular piece. Just reading through here, there's a couple of pieces in here that I find just very exciting, and hopefully, there will be some success in regards to these as we go to Olympia. And, and the first one is the I-90 Quarter Plan, and some of the outcome of, potential outcome of that. As we talk about Issaquah, and the over, overcrossing and direct access ramps to 12th Avenue, just the Front Street off-ramp, and the work, the potential relief of congestion in there, that was an extremely exciting one. That would be great to have some dollars put into, and some relief on there. But just also, just talking in regards to the restoration and main, the streamline of sales tax mitigation, also liquor reviews, the annexation of sales tax credit, making sure that stays in place, and basic law enforcement training. Just a couple of the key highlights I find in here, that I think if there's any little success, especially in regards to the Front Street off-ramp from I-90, would be a great relief to citizens in Issaquah, and also the potential long-term look, and an additional overcrossing. So, I'm excited to see what comes of this next legislative session.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Council ready to act on this? All those in favor of approving the 2014 State Legislative Agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passed unanimously. The next item to be, come before the council this evening is Agenda Bill 6735, Plastic Bag Ban Initiative Petition. And that is coming forward with a recommendation of adoption of a resolution, placing the initiative petition to a vote of the public at the February 2014 special election date. Councilmember Winterstein?
So, I see our Director of Office of Sustainability is here. Was there any additional information that was going to be presented tonight regarding this issue?
That is traffic.
Okay.
That was a question? Other questions? Councilmember Butler, I saw your hand?
I would move to approve Resolution Number?
2013-14.
Two tha-
I'm sorry?
Resolution Number 2013-14, directing the initiative petition entitled repeal of the plastic bag ban and forced paper bag charge to a vote of the public at the February 2014 special election date.
And as one of the original no votes on this, I would second that.
All right, so moved by Butler, seconded by Barber. Discussion and questions from the council. Councilmember Scher?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few remarks. I fully support public involvement and interest in legislation, but it strikes me as disproportionate that a petition led by interests outside our community can gather signatures from just 7% of our total population, and cause us to spend $50,000 on a ballot measure. I think this experience might be an opportunity to reflect on whether the use of an initiative process under the municipal code in IMC 112010 is reasonable. Alternatively, however, we can avoid an election by simply eliminating the ban, but there is a significant string attached, namely, that future legislation on this issue would remain subject to a public vote. I still believe that a user fee, not a ban, is the better policy. A fee would continue to give customers a choice, including plastic, while encouraging the use of reusable bags, which don't typically rip apart, at no cost. Additionally, the funds from a fee could be reinvested in broader environmental projects, rather than just a profit windfall for businesses that used to give away paper bags for free. This model started in Ireland, and has been successful in Washington DC. But even if we were to adopt the repeal and pursue my recommendation, we'd still be stuck having to spend money and hold an election based on the petition that's before us. Given my lack of confidence that this alternative model would even be considered, I'd rather just put the initiative decision to the public now, and see what the result of that will be. I do have one proposed amendment to offer, though. Retail establishments smaller than 7,500 square feet currently have until March 1st of 2014 to comply with the current city code. Holding an election on February 11th, 2014, provides very little time for small businesses to know what the outcome of that will be. This would cause confusion to owners in not knowing what stock to purchase. So, with that, I have an amendment, and I would move to amend the resolution and add the following words at the end, quote, "And amending IMC 8.05.070 to extend the compliance deadline for businesses under 7,500 square feet to August 1st, 2014," end quote.
I am looking to the city attorney.
It hasn't been seconded.
Oh, it hasn't been seconded, sorry. Okay, moved by Scher, and was that seconded by Forkner?
Um, yes, I would recommend that that be the subject of a, first of all, to amend the ordinance, you have to pass, it has to be in an ordinance. This is a resolution. And it has to deal, it deals with the placing on the ballot of the initiative petition. So, my recommendation would be, if that's the will of the council, that the administration could bring back an ordinance at the next meeting for you to consider and pass. And I don't think there would be any real loss of, of time. Either that, or this evening, we'd have to draft up an, an ordinance to accomplish it.
As the maker of the motion, I, I have no objection to coming back at a later time, but it certainly depends on whether my colleagues would support this particular course of action, for the reasons that I stated.
Does the secondor have to? Does the secondor accept withdrawing that?
Yes.
With the understanding that there will be preparation of something that would extend that timeline?
I would accept that.
All right. Further discussion or questions on this particular topic, the resolution as presented? Any additional questions or discussion? Councilmember Winterstein, and then Councilmember Goodman?
All right, thank you. So, I was supporter of the resolution, as originally proposed, and after giving it, you know, much thought. In fact, it was planned to come before the council, and feeling that the public needed greater opportunity to comment and give us input, I made the motion to actually delay the vote. And I think we got almost two more months under our belt, from the original intent to vote. And that afforded opportunity for a number of our citizens to, to comment. And just kind of rough, rough kind of calculation, that part of my consideration and support of the proposal that we adopted, or the, the ordinance that we adopted last year, was that over 60% of the citizens that contacted me were in favor of that ordinance. So, so, there's, it's, it's, you know, as an elected representative, my duty is to, to make informed decisions, and to use both my own judgment, and the consideration of my constituents when we make decisions. And trust me, that that was, followed that duly, and I take that very seriously. It is, but the, we're also a city of laws, and there are means and methods for this type of event to take place. Signatures were gathered, following, you know, proper protocol. They were submitted, they were validated, and now, the law dictates that we consider these two options, either accepting the petition as it is written, or putting it in front of a vote. Those are the two options. I'm in favor of putting it in front of a vote, because based upon my experience, and the data that I have, is that, in talking with, in hearing from constituents, that a significant majority do support the, the bag ban, as it already is. And so, therefore, I am definitely going to support this going in front of a vote. It's, and I can accept whatever outcome there is. And because I do also believe, one thing, we're all in the same boat. We all believe in a democracy, in that, you know, the will of the people should be served. And we're a representative democracy, and that's what we sit up here to do. And, and there are occasions when we must put the vote in front of the entire public, and we've gotten to that place here on this particular matter, and I can accept that. And we'll have this vote, and, and whichever way it, it results, I will accept those results. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like Councilman Winterstein, I too, was instrumental in delaying the vote by a couple of months, because I felt also that it hadn't had enough time to sort of be out there in the public. And during that two months, when we got more feedback, got more public comment, I too, kept track, and it was close to 60% of the, of the people who were in our community, not the people who came from, or emailed from other cities far away, Bellingham, Tacoma, many other places. I kept track of just the people here in our community. It was nearly 60% supported the ban, and so, that played a large role in my decision-making. I do, and I, and I do support putting this before the voters. I do have questions about the cost. Can we get some clarification on the, on the cost? We don't have an annexation vote, election set yet, because we're still going through the process, but can we get some clarity on what, what would happen if we had a couple of things on the ballot in February? What does that cost look like?
There are two, there, there would be, if the annexation vote went forward, two separate votes, which are not overlapping in the people who would be voting on them. So, it would not be, at least as I understand it, possible to combine the costs for one election, because there are, in fact, two, two different elections taking place. But I, I see our Director of-
My, David Fujimoto, Director of Office of Sustainability. My understanding is that the estimate that's in the Agenda Bill is a conservative estimate. It's the cost for the city to host an election for this particular ballot issue. Now, if there's a second ballot item that covers the same boundaries and same voters within the city, that, that cost could conceivably go down. For example, the school district is considering a ballot measure for that same election. We don't know the exact cost for that, but the number in here is, is probably, is a conservative number.
So, if I'm understanding you, the Agenda Bill tonight says, King County Elections has indicated the estimated cost for the special election regarding the, the bag ban to be $43,000 to $47,000, plus $2,100 to $2,800, including voters' pamphlet costs, which are optional. And so, am I understanding this correctly, that if we were to have a Kohani PAA vote on the same, during the same election, those would be, could be doubling those costs? They wouldn't be wrapped up into, you wouldn't get a twofer here?
My understanding is that the, the Kohani, I don't know that would be double the cost. The Kohani registered, they gave a number based on a cost per registered voter.
Okay.
And so, they didn't have a number, at least as far as I understand, for the total number of registered voters in Kohani. So, we don't know what that number is currently. This was based on the number of registered voters in the city of Issaquah. So, but that was a, based on, again, a per-registered voter number for a ballot measure. So, that's why it's not clear that that cost would probably- So, that's why it's not clear that that cost would probably come down if you had multiple ballot measures with the same registered voters.
But there'd be a separate cost associated with that one?
With Kohani, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Or discussion? Any other questions or discussion? Is council ready to act then on the topic, which is Resolution Number 2013-14, directing the initiative petition entitled "Repeal of the Plastic Bag Ban and Forced Paper Bag Charge to a Vote of the Public at the February 2014 Special Election Day"? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passed unanimously. The next item under regular business this evening is Agenda Bill 6737, "A Resolution Regarding Funding Commitment to Eastside Fire and Rescue." This has a description with some chronology or background on it, and it is in response to some actions that have taken place recently with Eastside Fire and Rescue's Board of And it is a proposal as to how to address some of the things that have been requested recently at, through Eastside Fire and Rescue. And I, I know that our Deputy Chief Greg Tryon is here this evening, who has background and information about it, and I will ask the council if you wish to hear that background and information first. And I'm seeing heads nodded in the affirmative, or at least no heads nodded vigorously in opposition. So, with that, Deputy Chief Tryon, could you give us some background, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council. The background that I would start with is sort of a condensed timeline, which is, in 1999, when Eastside Fire and Rescue came together, it was based on a funding model that all the partners had been doing for roughly 50-plus years together. It was based on an economic environment that didn't have the Great Recession, where generally assessed valuations increased. The assumption was that unincorporated was increasing, incorporated was increasing. As we've discovered, city of Issaquah, although it had a blip, has generally still been increasing over the last few years. Fire District 10s and Fire District 38 and the other unincorporated areas actually have been decreasing for a number of years, which started to expose some of the flaws in the current funding model. Additionally, the, as these flaws became apparent, there's an interesting thing that happens at Station 83, which is the Kohani Fire Station. Most of the fire stations, as the funding model works, those that have the most cost into the fire station run the most calls out of that fire station. An example is that District 10 and the city of Issaquah share 50% of the cost of Station 71, which is right across the street. Funny enough, they run about 50% of the calls to unincorporated King County and 50% of the calls to city of Issaquah. Station 83, the Kohani Fire Station, is something different. Roughly 50% of the calls go to city of Issaquah residents out of the Station 83, yet 6% of the costs are attributed to the city of Issaquah in the funding model for Eastside Fire and Rescue. So, the other fire stations are all within 10% of each other. Station 83 is the only one that isn't. It has this very diverse connection between assessed valuation and responses. Last week on Wednesday, District 10 passed a motion, an agenda bill, that said that they were interested in looking at a 75% assessed valuation to a 25% calls-for-service model, with some of the details to be worked out, sort of in negotiations. We know that the city of North Bend is calling a special meeting tomorrow to do the same thing. We've also just found out that District 38 will be calling a special meeting on Wednesday to take up that same issue of proposing a 75-25 model or something similar to that. So, that brings to the city of Issaquah, which has, working through its own budget process, also discovered another inequity in the funding model, which is, is that because of the movement of a fire station in May Valley, which better serves the citizens, will impact the city of Issaquah to roughly $550,000 in 2015, with no change in level of service to the city of Issaquah. That's one of the challenges of the funding model that was created back in 1999. So, that brings us here tonight with the resolution that the city council was proposing.
So, this is a complex topic, and I'm fully supporting the continued look at it. However, the agenda bill in front of us has some very specific language in front of it that I have no, in it, I have no idea if it's correct or not. So, rather than action on this resolution tonight, I am going to move that we refer Agenda Bill 6737 and its accompanying resolution to the council of the whole work session meeting on November 12th, with intended action at the regular council meeting on November 18th.
Moved by Winterstein, seconded by Barber.
I believe there's land and shore on November 12th.
Yeah, they're both on the calendar.
Okay, we'll meet quickly, I guess.
So, there are two meetings on November 12th, yes?
Yeah.
Councilmember Winterstein?
Just some more comments. So, Greg, so this is, this is complex, and we've had representatives, Councilmember Forkner, Councilmember Barber previously, it was Councilmember Mullet. And that's afforded me, speaking for myself, you know, some luxury of knowing that they are emerging themselves, and they're going to be familiar with the issues, and they're going to come back, you know, with a recommendation. And so far, that has worked really well. And this is really the first time I recall seeing something specifically to the funding model as specific as this 75-25 property valuation and usage split. Now, that may be the perfect solution. I don't know that yet. And so, my desire to, really, to move it to a work session, if you know what those are, that's an opportunity, it's a committee of the whole, where we will get information ahead of time. We'll get a chance to, to consider that, ask questions of one another, and become more familiar with the issues and the, and the, what it could mean. Now, I know that this resolution is really, in the intent, and I think in the spirit is, continue to work together and find a solution, and I'm all in favor of that. This particular resolution, and I think that's also in front of your board, was specifically the 75-25 split. And I think it would be a little bit, it'd be easy for just my support of the resolution as written as being almost a proxy vote of support, you know, for a 75-25 solution. And I don't know that that's correct. I don't believe any of us know that that's correct yet. And so, that's really, I think, taking, having that opportunity. This is an important decision, and it's really borne upon the respect of the criticality. Let's get a chance to do this right. I think I share with other of my colleagues on the council a real concern that we, that I want Eastside Fire and Rescue to work. I want its, I want its delivery model, its funding model, I want its employees and its management, and most importantly, you know, I want the citizens and their property that we serve to get the best possible service and do it at the most efficient way. And so, I have a lot of respect for that. And I know that a lot of work's gone into the development, just getting this, in the effort to develop a new interlocal agreement amongst all the partners in Eastside Fire and Rescue. And so, I certainly support all of that effort, and I want to make sure that my, my request tonight to move our decision on this proposal out a month, really is out of respect to make sure we're doing the right thing as a council and as a partner of Eastside Fire and Rescue.
Understand, sir.
Councilmember Forkner and then Councilmember Barber.
Just, just a little bit of background for the council. We had a facilitated, a series of facilitated meetings over the last two months that were put together to kind of look at what everybody wanted in a fire department, what they felt they needed, and whether there was value in Eastside Fire and Rescue. The last meeting was held two weeks ago, prior, just prior to our board meeting, and the discussion pretty much came around to the fact that city of Sammamish had a public hearing, I believe, a week ago, specific to the, to the fire department, and they are meeting on, I believe, November 4th or 5th to make a final determination of what they're, what they're going to do about Eastside Fire and Rescue or their own fire department. This whole 75-25 was kind of a last-ditch effort to see if there was any chance of keeping them with the organization. The rest of the, rest of the partners reluctantly, I believe, but, but have put it to their, to their respective bodies to determine whether it's something they're interested in. The funding model is something that can be decided by the directors. They don't have to come back to the council for decisions. Any revision to the ILA has to come back before the council and get council approval before it's done. The funding model question was brought back just so the council could have the ability to say, yeah, we feel that we want to move forward with five members, or if Sammamish feels that that's, that's what they need to continue to be part of the group, that the council understands the, the impact of that decision. And I believe, and I believe that if, if they don't have an answer from us prior to November 5th, they'll see that as a further stall and decide that they're going to leave. Now, I don't say that as, as a way of saying we need to take action tonight. I say that only as an information so that you understand what the history has shown and what I have been told by representatives from Sammamish and from some of the other partners.
As some input, so, October 29th will be another public hearing that city of Sammamish will have on this issue. It's a special hearing for it. November 5th is the night that we understand that the city manager will make his recommendation to the city council, and then they will make a decision on November 12th. That's what we've been told is the timeline.
Councilmember Barber?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think there's perhaps a couple of things to understand, that, that we are coming close to the end of the ILA, but we have time. It's not until December, the end of December of 2014. So, there is some, some time in there. A lot of the process that we've been going through, I mean, I've got binders and books of different funding models and conversations and debates back and forth, and, you know, it came to express extremely well how complex and how impactful it is to some members, and the very importance, in my opinion, that we slow down and really understand what we're looking at. And I think this is an opportune moment in which we can slow down and take a stronger look. We've had resolutions from District 10, we've got a resolution coming forward from the city of North Bend, we're looking at a resolution tonight ourselves. But I think some of the wording that's in here that I think is important is that we're talking about, one of the wherés is to recently proposed by Eastside Fire and Rescue Board to continue exploring funding models, their iteration timelines, and specifically to further explore some arrangements of the 75-25 property value. So, these aren't that we're looking at only the 75-25, but we're looking at and still talking about other issues. I, I think it's important that we continue to work, as we heard earlier, that but simply by moving a fire station, that it's going to cost the city of Issaquah $550,000 more because a fire station got moved. We didn't have any increase of service, we didn't have any more firefighters on the streets. We also have already been hit by a $400,000 hit in regards to a boundary line from the city of Bellevue that moved. It didn't, I mean, it's not even a partner of ours, but it affected our implications to Eastside Fire and Rescue by $400,000. Before we jump in here and say, yes, it's a 75-25, I really think we need to take some real serious thought, really take an opportune moment to look at it thoroughly and make some decisions, what is best in the long term for our residents and for Eastside Fire and Rescue. This is an organization that's been together for a number of years. There's a number of firefighters whose jobs and families are, are potentially going to be impacted by that, but so is the city of Issaquah, so are other cities underneath this, this ILA that we're working on. So, if it takes us a little bit of time, I would rather that we take that time and that we look at what we're doing and not jump forward. The, I have heard, and help me out, please, Chief, Deputy Chief, a lot of this 75-25 conversation that I have heard has not necessarily been that this is the path we want to move for the final funding model, but this is a path that we could potentially move down and do temporarily at the end of our current ILA to extend a year or maybe two, to go into a 75-25. And there's also been different pieces of that. So, the 75-25 would only be for Station 83 as opposed to all of Issaquah, or also looking at all partners equally.
So, Fire District 10, in their motion, said that they would, they would primarily like to look at a 75-25 model that centered around Station 83. Part of their discussion also was, is that any savings that they realized, because they would realize some savings in that, they would actually like, and they've empowered their board chairman to come speak to the city of Issaquah to say, we would like to offset your costs. It's not a complete offset, but that's what they feel they would like to do with the money saved in that 75-25 model. The question is, and each partner might look at it differently, but whether you spread 75-25 over all the partners, or is it just at Station 83 where this one abnormal funding arrangement seems to be? And that's, again, the 6% of Issaquah's costs, yet they run 50% of the calls out of the station, and there isn't any other relationship to calls per assessed valuation as there is at that station. So, that's one thing that they talked about. I think all of these motions that you're going to see from the city of North Bend, the city, or the district, Fire District 38, is that they're going to say that we believe that 75-25 is something that we should look at, but it's not a final thing, meaning that there's still the process that EFOR works out, where your directors will make, you know, a final assessment saying, yes, this is what we believe as a funding model. To your point of what are we, you know, left with, the, sometime in January is when the official notice has to go out. The purpose of what's been going on the last two months is that, or these final two months, is that Sammamish is frustrated with the model. As you just pointed out, with the $550,000 cost increase, Issaquah should be frustrated with that model as well. It existed very well when this, it was put into place, but now does need to change. If an agreement came to be that 75-25 was something that worked for the group because it was in generality fair, or it met the things that the partners agreed to, you could say yes to it now, and as a group, you could still change it by May 31st of 2014 to affect the 2015 budget. All of these things we're talking about are affecting the 2015 budget. They're not affecting the 2014 budget. So, as you move forward, saying, yes, we are interested in moving forward and discussing, you know, what the future looks like, you could say yes to this, or no to this, or whatever it is, and knowing that you could still change it by May 31st, excuse me, May 30th of 2014 to affect change. Or you could put it into place, let it work for a year, and decide that May 2030 of 2015, you want to change it because you don't like its impacts. You can change it again, and that's probably the one thing that's been underutilized in the board at EFOR, is changing the funding model. It's sort of become this permanent thing, and as we've discovered, that may not be the best thing, not the fairest thing for all the partners.
And I do believe that there is a great deal of discussion that could be held around that, because as we've, over the course of the years, there's always been a potential piece, as we said, with, with the moving of Station 78 and a fire... five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar hit, um, you know, and, and we also, even though, hopefully, um, I'll leave that one alone for the moment, but, you know, there is, there's...
We do believe that if there's some sort of long-term consensus, whether it's, you know, a formality of that we are Eastside Fire and Rescue for the next twenty years, whether there's some other operating agreement between these groups, that the cities of Issaquah and Samamish could, you know, um, see something on the order of tens of millions of dollars of savings over thirty years if both entities could say, "Yes, we shall work together so we properly place our fire stations as though we were one fire department or one fire service." We could see tens of millions of dollars of savings. But it would have to be long-term, because in short terms, um, you were talking about, Councilmember Winterstein, about the issues of looking at one-year funding budgets versus five-year, et cetera. This is the same thing. If we knew that we were going to be together for thirty years, the, the work that we could do and save would be huge, but you're not going to do that for very short term because it's too expensive to move fire stations every five to seven years.
Yeah. So I, I, I think you can hear the complexity and the concerns and the questions that are still unanswered, so I think it's very important. I mean, we can continue to talk this evening, but I think it's important to take this back as the motion was said this evening, back to a work-study session and get a little bit more information on this, and have a, a, a longer period of time in which to really debate back and forth and understand this. Uh, it's, you have to have sort of my, my three-inch binder here of information, um, and I don't think we can go through all of that this evening, but hopefully we can have the opportunity at a work-study session to get more involved in it.
Questions or comments? Councilmember Scher.
Thank you. Um, you know, this is not my area of expertise, and, um, I'm a strong supporter of the partnership. Uh, I have to rely on the expertise of Councilmembers Barber and Fortner as our representatives to the board, um, but in looking at the resolution, I honestly don't see that it does much of much at the moment. Um, Section One talks about exploring and understanding the impacts of the funding formula and seventy-five, twenty-five. It sounds like we're doing that. Two talks about weighing the best interests of the city and the partnership. Check, we're doing that. Three talks about engaging with discussions that exactly touch on what Councilmember Winterstein just said about fair and equitable solutions, providing optimum efficient services. We're doing that. Uh, Services and Safety Committee making a, a standing agenda item. I assume that Chair Barber could, uh, do that within her own discretion, absent a resolution, and, uh, you know, if in five, the funding formula is recommended, uh, or an amendment, uh, is recommended to the ILA, the council will review, um, and as Councilmember Fortner pointed out, the ILA would be, be reviewed by the council, although it sounds like the funding formula would be dealt with directly by the Board of Directors. So it sounds to me like we're doing all the things that these five prongs of the resolution suggest, and I don't have a particular problem with setting this over to the work session because adopting this resolution tonight isn't, in my opinion, going to do anything more than what we already have talked about this evening. Uh, it's not going to make an actual decision on what we feel the funding model should or shouldn't be. Uh, I noticed there's no doom and gloom in terms of the alternative of recommending it being referred, uh, to a later date, so there doesn't appear, appear to be a drawback to Councilmember Winterstein's motion, so I'll support the, uh, motion to refer.
Other questions or discussion? Councilmember Winterstein.
Yeah, I wanted to point out, um, thank you to, uh, City Clerk Eggers. I had asked for the, our schedule, and, um, we actually, the, the date of November twelfth just hap- is the next planned committee of the whole work session where, where we can put it on the agenda. We have two before then, but they're all committed to two thousand and fourteen budget deliberations. And then, so that's where those dates came from. There were other, there, you know, that's, I was just looking at the next available opportunity that we had on the calendar.
Other questions?
Deputy Chief had a comment.
Oh, certainly.
The, the one, um, comment to Councilmember Scher's that I would, um, speak to is that one of the things that the District Ten put their motion up when they did, because they wanted to take a lot of pressure off the city of Issaquah, which was sort of pushed into even more of a leadership role that the city normally takes on. They, um, wanted to take off some of the pressure off your shoulders that you could make decisions that you felt were in best interest to your city, your citizens. Um, one of the things that we see with this resolution is a positive, it's sending a message, and as your point, which was that our message is that we are looking at this and wish to be, as you said, very detailed, very specific, make sure that we are making the right decisions. And that's a positive that does come out of this resolution, is that you're sending that message more than anything else. So, excuse me, I appreciate your time.
Other questions? Councilmember Butler.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I think by being here this evening and agreeing to, uh, talk about this, uh, expresses a willingness to, you know, that we're willing to listen and to try to solve, uh, a number of, of problems, and I appreciate the fact that, uh, I've heard a number of times, uh, we want, want to be fair. Uh, I think it's important, though, that we don't want to feel rushed about this. I heard, I mean, we've got a potential five-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar hit, uh, on Station Seventy-One. A seventy-five, twenty-five would, would, would impact our budget by several hundred-thousand dollars. Uh, all of a sudden, you're talking about a lot of money. That's seven-hundred and, you know, seven-hundred-thousand dollars, uh, over and above what we're paying for fire service now with no, no, no increase in, uh, really service. It's carrying on. I think there's some, I, I'd like for our work session, if this motion passes, to see what the five-year projection would be under this. I think that when you see real figures and you look at, uh, just the cost of living and, and how that's going to impact us, you know, we'll go from five-point-two to six million or something like that, you, you know, before we even know it. Uh, I've heard mentioned that, uh, Providence Point is taking a significant, uh, amount of calls, uh, that are serviced by Fire Station eighty-three, but, uh, I have heard that there may be some other alternatives that are more cost-effective in providing that service for the type of calls. So I'd like to sort of know, you know, what's the number of calls and the nature of the calls up there, and is there a better way to provide that service? And, uh, you know, if we could provide more cost-effective service with five stations when we've got six, well, that ought to be a part of the equation also, and, and so there should be a willingness on the part of, uh, our impacted partners to say, "Yes, we're serious about that, and we're willing to look because we will all benefit from that." Uh, so, uh, I support the motion, but, uh, I think it's important that we fully and completely understand the financial impacts and the sustainability of what it's going to cost us in order to, uh, provide, uh, service under these different scenarios.
Other questions? What comments? Councilmember Barber.
Just a, a final comment that I'd like. Um, there, the city of Issaquah, and as one of the directors from the city of Issaquah, we have a commitment to Eastside Fire and Rescue. I believe, and, and I'm speaking in generalities, but I do believe the rest of the, my city council members' agreement, we, we do receive a very quality product, and it's operationally sound, and we are constantly looking at every penny and dollar within that budget. Um, sometimes I think we look a little bit too close. I would like to make sure that we are taking our time, and, and one of the last, at the last Board of Directors meetings we had, there was a motion forward, um, that if necessary, we can extend the current ILA one additional year, and I don't believe we've actually taken action on any of these, have we, Greg?
Uh, no.
They are just motions forward that we'll probably see at our next meeting. So there is the ability for us to be able to extend, maybe there will be the ability to extend the current ILA, if we need it, additional year, so that as we go through here and we study all of these different pieces, that we are not rushing, as Councilmember Butler said, that we're taking our time, that we're sure of what we're moving forward to. But there was a very strong commitment from the directors that were there towards Eastside Fire and Rescue and towards working this out and finding a, uh, funding model that would work. So I was just anxiously looking forward to working on it.
And on that extension, as, um, Councilmember Fortner said, that extension would take a vote of all the councils and commissions. Um, District Ten has passed that as one of their motions that they did. Um, North Bend is going to take that up tomorrow, and I'm assuming District Thirty-eight will take it up as well on theirs.
Councilmember Fortner.
Yeah, just one comment. Um, I, I really believe that Samamish has drawn the line in the sand. I believe that our action tonight is going to be contrary to what they want to see from us. I really believe that while moving forward with Eastside Fire and Rescue is good, it's a lot better with five members instead of four. Um, I, I understand it's a complex issue, and I understand everybody's concern, uh, but I, I'm not going to be able to support the resolution so that, uh, because I, I think that, I think, I think it's going to be too little, too late to keep the partnership together. That's just my own personal opinion, um, and, and, uh, hopefully I'm wrong, and hopefully months from now you'll be able to prove that I was wrong, and I hope so.
Councilmember Goodman?
I'm going to support the motion, uh, because I want to fully understand the latest, um, discussions that are going on, and I don't as of right now. What I'm hoping is that if this, if this does pass and we go into, um, a November Committee of the Whole discussing that, that, uh, our, um, friends up the city of Samamish will understand that, um, just as they have, in my view, um, taken their time to be diligent, um, in looking at what their options are and what they would like to do for the best interest of their city and their citizens, that we're just doing the same, and I'm, I'm hoping that a couple of extra weeks doesn't...
That will be the message that we take to them, so as Eastside Fire.
Great, thank you.
Other discussion? Yes, Councilmember Winterstein.
Yeah, and I'll, um, another, there's no mention in the material that we have about these dates that Councilmember Fortner shared with us, um, until he mentioned them, I wasn't aware. Uh, and, and I, um, and I haven't been that close to it, but I do appreciate it when the elected body is feeling they're reaching a point where they need to make a decision and take action, so I, so I respect that. And, um, you know, my attitude, again, I haven't had to because we've had good representation, and, and we haven't had council action on, on the ILA yet, but, um, uh, I've never deviated from the thought at all that, um, of what I've heard you and others say, and some of my colleagues sitting here say, that, that the current, uh, that, um, Eastside Fire and Rescue, as envisioned, um, is, is, is the right thing for all its members. And, um, and I also heard tonight for the first time, maybe I heard, maybe I was told this before, but I don't recall, the six percent cost and fifty percent calls. So, you know, you look at the surface of that and say, you know, I'm, we can look at that.
Mm-hmm.
That's, uh, and, and I've also, but I've also heard over time that, you know, maybe the, based upon the, the type of those calls, that maybe there's another, there's an alternative delivery or service model that could still meet the needs of a lot of those calls. We need to look at that. Um, and so, and so, um, you know, I, 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 actually, now knowing, you know, these dates, it, you know, that, uh, from the city of Samamish, you know, that, that, I had no idea that we were facing that. And that makes me really uncomfortable. Um, this wasn't presented that way. It's kind of like, accept this offer right now to go and, 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 uh, and let us consider these other models, or it's all over. And that's, that's, um, uh, I, I say, because there's a specific model in here, it says seventy-five, twenty, uh, I, I think that's, like I said, I think there's, there would be an implicit, "That's what we accept." And I don't know that. That might be the perfect answer, I don't know that. And I think, I think, we don't have another opportunity before November twelfth to dive into that a little bit further, so I want to. Uh, I think it's the best interest, it's tough, because we have to serve both the interests of our constituents here in Issaquah and all our partnership with EFOR, and that's what we're trying to ba- balance. And, um, hopefully, the manner, um, that we've outlined with the motion, action by the eighteenth of November is still timely enough. That's my hope.
Other discussion?
All right, the motion before you is an amendment, which is to take this topic, the resolution that is before you, and have it looked at at the November twelfth Committee of the Whole Council meeting with action to take place anticipated at the November eighteenth City Council meeting. So that's the motion before you. It is an amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so that is five in favor and one, Councilmember Fortner in opposition.
It was a motion.
Oh, all right, sorry. I was looking at it as an amendment by substitution, but I, I stand corrected. So, it was a motion. Does anyone wish to reconsider his or her vote, someone on the prevailing side, because it was a motion? Okay. All right, um, that is the regular business to come before the council this evening. The next item on the agenda is Good of the Order, and I will ask if there are any items for Good of the Order. Anything for Good of the Order? No? Um, there's no executive session, and therefore we are adjourned at seven minutes after nine o'clock. Thank you.